Call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the June 2nd, 2025 City of Kalispell Council Meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Carlson.
Here.
Counselor Gabrielle.
Here.
Counselor Graham.
Here.
Counselor Dowd.
Here.
Counselor Dolman.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Hunter.
Here.
Counselor Nunley.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Carlson, do you wish?
Yes, your honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For agenda in front of us, I'll look to council for approval. Mr. Dowd.
Your honor, I move the agenda as published.
Second.
Second, thank you, Mr. Nunley. All in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Motion carries. We have four items on the consent agenda this evening. First item are the council minutes from the May 5th, May 6th, and May 7th meetings. Second item is award professional consultant for the stormwater decant facility project. This item considers awarding this agreement to Robert Peschan Associates. The third item is award equipment procurement contract for the wastewater treatment plant de-watering improvement program. This item considers awarding this contract to Process Wastewater Technologies LLC in the amount of $839,000. And the fourth item is approve amendment to Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks Grant Agreement. This item considers accepting an additional $126,362.20 for aquatic facility improvements. Is there any public comment on any of the four items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, council for a motion. Mr. Nunley.
Thank you, your honor. I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second, thank you, Ms. Carlson. All in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Motion carries. Committee report. This evening, we're going to hear Flathead City County Health Department. Ms. Rankowski.
I expected you guys to talk a lot longer. Hi, I'm Jen Rankowski with the Flathead City County Health Department. We're here to talk about the budget report. So, I did send in the budget report that was reviewed by our finance subcommittee, our Board of Health, and our Flathead County manager, and also the commissioners. So, there's not much that's changing on this. I mean, I say not much, but we have had a significant cuts. So, the community health center will be leaving. They'll be going, moving into their new building in probably about September, October, and that will stop that revenue, which is about $250,000 that had been revenue for the health department. So, we had to cut back pretty significantly there. And then, we were also cut about $100,000 in grants at the state level. Some of it was the federal grant, some of them the state got rid of. We had potentially anticipated them. There was about $30,000 we hadn't anticipated, so that was a definite change. Our projected steady revenues for immunization and environmental health departments, those should stay steady. We will have to increase the mills this year, and it will also depend on the outcome of the House Bill 231 and Senate Bill 542. We did get some good news, and that was the House Bill 853 where licensures for food establishments, pools, those types of things did get increased, so that will increase revenue there. So, hopefully, that will offset the loss of this community health centers, the funding. We anticipate potentially a 1% COLA, small increase in personnel cost, and we absorbed a 1 FTE when we lost that other funding. We have been able to move a few people around. We are able to move somebody part-time into the behavioral health because we do have money in there. They're going to do support for the behavioral health program. We are looking at potentially expanding that behavioral health program. We are starting to get revenue in, being able to bill when the co-responders do go out. So, it's our hope within the next year to add another co-responder. So, we would have three co-responders and three support staff for those co-responders. It is increasing the response of the co-responders. They are busy all of the time. There's very little downtime, but they're doing phenomenal work. Expanded into the jail, so they are supporting our jail staff and being able to go in there and help them when needed. So, that's been excellent as well. We have had some slight increases with some IT support and our SIP fund. So, those are the general highlights. What questions do you have for me? If any.
Questions? Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, thank you, your honor. Thank you for that. I appreciate hearing about the expansion of the behavioral health program and also the co-responder program. Excellent programs. You mentioned a couple of bills in legislature. I don't know them by the bill number. Could you explain what those couple of bills?
They had to do with the levies, so the taxable amount of the levies. So, if we can levy as much as we can, or it has to be 75%, we're still waiting for the shakeout of that and what that all means on those. So, I don't have that at this time. I don't know if they got passed yet. But it's softball and graduation, so I'll get more into it this next week about what's happening. But I know some did pass that I don't think were quite favorable, so we'll probably have to make some budget adjustments to that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, open the meeting for general public comment. Any public comment on items that are not on the agenda this evening, please step forward and state your name and give your comments to the council.
Name's Kerry Wyrock. I live at 1859 Old Reserve Drive. I know that isn't in town, but I do own commercial property over on Second Avenue West in this downtown area. I'd just like to comment on the four-lane, or two-lane coming up. I wasn't able to make your work session. I did send three different, or three different comments to the public comment at Kalispell. Never heard a word back from anybody on them. But my thought and comment is, before you spend a lot of time on this change, I had, starting in mid-May, but that's long gone. To the end of September or December, shut off the inner two lanes of the highway coming to the downtown. Put up some cones, whatever, so you have one lane going each way, and you're parking. See what that does for your traffic when we get into the summertime. See how backed up things get. Making it a two-lane road is, I'm sorry, kind of crazy. Because for how many years was the road around the courthouse that is two-lane talked about turning it into four-lane because it's backing up traffic? So, now you want to take and cut more back to it. The one question I have, if somebody could get back to me on it, is the accidents that have happened downtown over the last four, six years that you talk about. How would they have been avoided with just this two-lane road? What was the cause of these accidents? You know, I looked and, okay, most accidents are caused by inattentive driving, crazy drivers, fast drivers. How would this two-lane stop all that? Probably fast driving because you can't move on it, but anyway, that's my comment on that. We have a four-lane highway from Whitefish to Summers. Why shut it down to two-lane? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please note, we do have this as an agenda item, and we will take public comment on that as an agenda item as well.
Can we do that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I just, this is really kind of just, I didn't stop Mr. Wyrock, but this is just really for the general comment. Anything not on the agenda this evening.
And the?
The four-lane to two-lane is on the agenda.
Oh, it is on the agenda?
Oh, yeah.
Because I'll come back.
Nope, don't worry about it.
I didn't see it on there either. I'll come back.
Yeah, it's on there. Any other general public comment? Okay, now, we're going to move on to Resolution 6255 Main Street Concept Design Grant Application Submission. This resolution considers authorizing staff to submit the Kalispell Main Street Concept Design to the U.S. Department of Transportation Safe Streets and Roads for All Implementation Grant Program. This is the four-lane to two-lane. So, Mr. Russell?
Yeah, mayor and council, as you know, we've been now basically working on this concept with, since the implementation of downtown plan in 2017, and actually with studies even before that. So, it's just kind of followed in with that process, but now we're at that point of whether or not to move forward with the grant application. So, to kind of give some of the history related to it and some of the background and the design components, I'll turn it over to our Director of Development Services, Jared Nygren.
Mayor and council, thank you. I'll do a brief presentation here. We did do a work session back in April. Also did a presentation in May for the public hearing. Tonight, the action before you would be to authorize city staff to put together Safe Streets and Roads for All Implementation Grant to the federal highways in the amount of $25 million. Just as a side note, there's been a lot of comments about being able to use this money for something else. That's not the case. This is federally designated money specifically for safety projects for projects similar to this. So, with that, I guess I'll just start by, it's actually a good picture of the courthouse couplet, which, you know, the county thankfully invested a lot of money into not too long ago because it is such a historic piece of property entering our downtown. You'll see what we call the courthouse couplet, which is the Highway 93 North, which goes from pretty much the United States southern border to the United States northern border, going right through the middle of town, but is also Main Street and was Main Street long before it ever became the highway. And so, Kalispell was platted in, you know, 1890, 1892. Subsequently, the highway, as a lot of case, kind of took the route through the middle of towns, and that was the case here. So, the section you see there is the only section of highway that is currently still a two-lane. The 1994 Environmental Impact Study, the Summers to Whitefish Four-Lane Highway Project. This still is pretty much in its configuration prior to being widened. Since that time, you know, it's kind of been on MDT's list to widen it. It's got city parkland around it. It's a historic couplet. The city has always thought that, you know, that wasn't a good plan for Kalispell because if it was a four-lane, traffic studies show that you will double traffic through town in the next 20 years. So, imagine the traffic we have today and double it. Imagine doubling that traffic then at Idaho and Meridian, which is already a failing intersection. So, based off of that, Kalispell knew what the future held. The Kalispell bypass has since been built, always with the idea, going back to, like I had mentioned last time in 1979, where they started contemplating how to get traffic around Kalispell so that they could preserve traffic, or sorry, to make Kalispell downtown a place to go to, not through. So, with that, the 2015, the northern half of the bypass was being completed. As you recall, the south half was partially in place. The northern half was slated to be completed. The core area plan was moving forward, or the plan with the Kalispell Parkline Trail, which also, as you remember, at the time, wasn't, everybody didn't like that idea. It was quite controversial as well. But, you know, you see it today in what it is, removing the railroad tracks and all the reinvestment it's created to go along with that. But the downtown wanted to know that we hadn't forgotten about them, so we started a planning process, talking to almost every property owner and tenant downtown and talked about what are the issues? And it was pretty clear, too much noise, too much traffic. It's just, it's not a good place to be. It's not viable. And once the bypass was in place, not to forget that the whole point of that was to make Main Street back to what it was. So, the Kalispell Council, City Council adopted the downtown plan in 2017, outlining a number of goals and issues, including a three-lane, which would help mitigate traffic issues downtown, such as the noise, dust, pollution, truck traffic, et cetera. The council also created the urban renewal plan and tax increment finance districts subsequent to that as well, just trying to provide that path forward, giving future councils the ability to make needed improvements as outlined within that plan. So, in 2022, the city applied for and was awarded a Safe Streets and Roads for All Planning Grant from federal highways. The safe systems approach is about creating safe roads and safe speeds, and also aligns with Montana Department of Transportation's Vision Zero policy, which the goal of zero fatalities and zero serious injuries on any public roadway in the state of Montana. As part of the grant, the city has kind of broken that up into two phases. The first phase was creating a comprehensive safety plan, which the council adopted back in August, which was a much larger planning area. I'll get to that. And then, Phase Two was to develop concept designs for Main Street, First Avenue East and West. Sorry, with the idea of implementing any of the, because there was a number of projects outlined with the main, with the plan itself, but obviously, there's a lot more projects and funding. So, we narrowed it down to potentially looking at Main Street in first as first to further identify what any of the issues could be, and obviously, traffic circulation and such to see if it was a feasible design, because to this point, there had been a number of studies. The transportation plan had kind of indicated it was feasible, that there needed to be further studies done. A 2017 study by an engineering firm, Robert Peschek, had kind of indicated that it would be feasible, but the bypass needed to be completed. So, we kind of always knew it was a possibility and just general knowledge as far as what they called road diets or road reconfigurations. With the amount of traffic Main Street has, it's worked in other communities. So, but we just further developed that through what is the Main Street Concept Design Memo that would be before you tonight. So, for the viewing audience, the Main Street Safety Action Plan included a much larger area, looking around downtown. Like I said, there was a number of safety issues within the planning area, a number of accidents, a number of serious injuries. But a majority of those did account or happen on Main Street. Between 2018 and 2023, Main Street accounted for 21% of all serious injury crashes within the Kalispell planning area. The vision for Main Street is to apply the safe system approach to eliminate fatal and serious injury crashes and reduce crash risk along Main Street corridor to promote a safe, livable and connected community for all users of transportation over a 20-year horizon. Implementing the proposed treatments addresses the safety concerns identified in Kalispell's Safety Action Plan and promotes greater connectivity and access, especially for vulnerable road users, including students accessing schools on the east and west of Main Street. I had mentioned the school district has actually segregated their school district boundaries based off of Main Street. Your school may be closer to one, or your student or your kid may be close to a school, that the district was literally segregated, knowing that kids are not safe crossing Main Street. This plan identified that, created a number of safe crossings using rapid flashing beacons, and just generally, the three-lane configuration is a safer road crossing as well. And this kind of addresses one of the, actually, a question that just got brought up about how do we know it'll create safety? A roadway reconfiguration alone can reduce crashes by 47%. So, close to 50%, a four-lane to a three-lane will reduce crashes by up to 47%. Dedicated turn lanes by 28%. This also has that with the center turn lane. Roundabouts, I don't know why it's not showing there, about 80%. Crosswalk visibility enhancements, 40%. Leading pedestrian interval, 13%. And median refuge islands by 50%, 56% and RRFBs by 47%. So, this proposed project would include a mixture of all of this. I can't give you an exact number, but the idea is by doing the improvements, the accidents that have happened on Main Street would likely, based off of the statistics, be severely reduced. With that, I just, there's some concept design. This is Main Street looking north. You could see it's a three-lane configuration, one lane moving north, one lane moving south with a center turn lane, so you can make left-hand turns, which is also identified as a major issue by downtown businesses. Because at this point in time, if you're coming to downtown and you see a business you want to go to, you can't even stop. You essentially have to, you're pushed through town and have to find a way around. In this configuration, you'd actually be able to make a left-hand turn and get to that business. Does actually create more circulation within the downtown as well. And then, looking to the south, to the courthouse couplet as well, where you've got a school right on Main Street. And I can go back to those, but key supporting analysis in this, like I had mentioned, there were about 258 crashes on Main Street, including eight serious injury crashes. Those are not crashes you walk away from. Those can be life-threatening injuries, likely have some sort of disability for the rest of your life. Seven intersections were identified as having a high crash risk and safety concerns. The proposed treatments will reduce those most common crash types. Under 2024 existing conditions, travel time would increase by 30 to 60 seconds. So, if you were to implement this today, driving from the south end of Main Street to the north end, you're going to have an extra maximum one minute of delay at peak traffic time. Obviously, then, you would weigh that against all the safety benefits you would get with it. Provisions for left turns along Main Street will improve local circulation and access and community support. Obviously, it's outlined. We've been working on this going back, not only to the downtown plan, but since we received the planning grant through the, through the planning process of the Safety Action Plan as well as coming up these concept designs. And then, final design considerations are for you, or before you, which is kind of outline the particular projects, environmental considerations, hydraulics, parking, et cetera. And it does come with a concept level design that we, or a cost estimate that we'd build to use for the grant application itself. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, your honor. Thank you for that presentation. I do have a lot of questions, so. There's been a lot of public comment about the parking situation downtown. I know we've had a number of studies about parking downtown. Could you kind of summarize what the conclusions were from those parking studies?
Yeah, I guess a couple of things. I would say it has been a number of years since we've driven around and done a parking count. I don't think it's changed a whole lot. That's just my own perception. But 100% of the time, there is a parking spot within one block of you. Now, I think part of the problem is maybe sometimes it's tough to get there because maybe you can't make a left turn or something like that. The circulation downtown is not easy. And just to give you a point of reference, a block length downtown is about 300 feet. I would say most people are willing, as actually we had a public comment, willing to walk at least that far in front of Walmarts, but they don't want to do it downtown for whatever reason. In addition, I would also say that the council did approve a parking garage of 250 parking spaces. So, if your concern is parking, that has been addressed. But also, within the downtown area, there is always a parking space in close proximity. It may not be right where you want it, but if you're willing to venture just within a couple hundred feet, you're going to find one.
And there's been a lot of comment about snow storage, and I know we talked about that in previous meetings. Could you touch on how snow storage will be handled on the redesign?
Yeah, I mean, it was, it's definitely one of the leading factors when we look at the design. You know, we worked with MDT, MDT Maintenance, City of Kalispell, City of Kalispell Maintenance and Crews. It would be done similarly today. It'd be plowed to the middle. So, in a lot of ways, they feel it's less for them to plow. This is going to be easier. But it's going to be the same, the exact same as how it's done today. Right now, it gets plowed to the middle. It takes up driving lanes, you know, for a period of time. So, it would be plowed to the middle, and there has been no concerns with doing that.
And then, comment about the wider sidewalks and shoveling the snow from there into the parking lanes. Could you speak to that and any ways to address that or concerns about that?
Same as today. They would plow, they would do it the exact same as today. There is going to be a little more. That could be a policy discussion in the future about if it became an issue, but it's, the sidewalk clearing would be the exact same as it is today. Right now, it's pushed into the parking lane. That's the same thing they're going to do in this case. Plow will go and pick it up out of the, out of the lane and put it into the middle.
And then, there was a comment made in the original presentation a few meetings ago about keeping the lanes wider rather than narrowing them because of the snow plowing issue. Is that an issue of the size of the blade having space, or why was wider lanes needed for the snow plowing?
I think it was a couple of things. I don't know if it was just the snow plowing. It also takes into account that we heard a lot of comment how our truck's going to get downtown and how our delivery is going to get downtown. It's a balance of if you're going to do a three-lane, you still want to, you don't want to squeeze it that much. So, yeah, some communities have narrowed the lanes down to 10 feet. This maintains the wider lanes, but in a three-lane configuration, which will still make it easier for truck traffic to make deliveries downtown, will also still make it easier to plow, will not make it too tight for those that are concerned or have bigger vehicles. So, another safety measure actually is reducing lane width because a lot wider lanes do tend to increase speed. But given we're trying to balance, you know, everything we have, the configuration is maintaining, I believe it's 12 or 13-foot lanes, which is what is out there today.
It's 12. Is it 12 or 13? 12, yeah. And then, also, I'm just trying to touch on some of the comments that have come up. Emergency vehicle access under the new design and how they get through the street. Could you touch on that?
I don't want to speak for them, but they've been involved. Once again, they actually feel it can make it easier because in, at certain times of day, it'll actually give them a free lane. You know, they're going to be running their side. There's traffic protocols and such where people have to move over. But they've been part of the process, and like I said, they would typically likely, if they are on Main Street, I mean, you've got first and first and side streets, but be using the center lane most of the time.
Yeah, I can follow up. As, I mean, our apron's empty out onto First Avenue East. That is the predominantly route that is taken when you go up north. So, you know, those concerns that were brought up, do not follow the typical traffic pattern of an emergency response.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Thank you. Does our code currently allow for covered heated sidewalks seating during winter time? So, I know other cities in the winter time, you have those kind of sheds that sit on a wider sidewalk, and then they put heaters inside, and it's outdoor seating for the restaurants. Would our code allow for that on wider sidewalk?
We haven't really had to contemplate it at this point in time. It's not really feasible to do with our existing sidewalks, so I don't think it's necessarily counted. We have a right-of-way encroachment permit, and we do, we have a permit system. But I think we had a permit system for, I'm sorry, the term's not coming anywhere. We've allowed people to do it in a parking spot in the road.
Parklet.
Park, like a parklet. So, we would use a similar process to that. But that was actually out in the parallel parking spot. So, we have allowed those in the past, but I think because of traffic and stuff, they weren't very popular. So, this likely would follow a process similar to that.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be good to take a look at that because I, I know that's pretty common in other cities for winter time seating and use of the, of a. for winter time seating and use of the, of a particularly a larger sidewalk. Is there a plan to kind of maintain business activity downtown during the construction?
As with any construction, there's going to be disruption up on West Reserve. Right now, there's a lot of businesses and homeowners being impacted. The plan, so we've shown it's feasible. There's multiple routes of how construction could happen. It's going to depend on ultimately if the city were awarded, who was picked. But it would be the city's number one concern is dealing with those property owners and creating, you know, stakeholder groups and meetings forums to not only have the information out there, but how to best handle that. I mean, there's a number of ways. You can try and get it done really quick with a lot of impact or try and do it slower. Like I said, we've initially looked at likely doing the south half first and then the north half after that. So, over two construction seasons. We live in an environment where, an environment where winter construction is difficult. But yes, there, there would definitely be a period of time where it's going to be difficult in order to, to provide for this. But I would say, like I said, with, with any construction project, you may recall on Center Street a couple of years ago is completely ripped up. There's a lot of business owners on that street that had to deal with that for a long time. Main Street needs work as it is, not to the extent of this, not to the length of this, but Main Street needs work as it is. So, regardless, there is going to be some impact at a certain point in time on Main Street and downtown business owners.
And people have mentioned that downtown was once two lanes. That was before my time, but I'm curious whether that was similar to, to the proposed design we're, we're looking at and if we have any data as to how it compares to what we're dealing with, with, with the current four lane situation.
Yeah, it wasn't a three lane. And it included angled parking, which there's no angled parking here. So, angled parking, we've had questions, why are we aren't proposing angled parking? Because it takes up too much space, there's not enough right of way. So, with angled parking, which certainly some communities prefer is so far as parking. But with that, you, you wouldn't be able to maintain the travel lanes, the travel lane width. So, even though it was a two lane, it was a completely different configuration of this. The lane widths would have been narrower, there wouldn't have been a center turn lane and you would have parallel parking. So, it, it would have been a completely different scenario.
Then, with our twenty percent match requirement, do we have thoughts of other grant funding sources? Or what's kind of thinking for that match funding and, and where we might?
Well, you know, after the implementation downtown plan, council authorized the tax increment financing district, which would be used specifically for the components within the downtown plan in that urban renewal district. So, really, that was the intent of creating that district. Terms of other grants, you usually can't match federal dollars for federal dollars, so we wouldn't be looking at that. But the primary source would be matching it with the access and leverage of that downtown tax increment financing district.
Yeah, great, thank you. You mentioned, you talked about the future and, and the growth and the doubling of traffic over time. What would that mean if we didn't do this project and we saw that kind of doubling of traffic? What would that mean in terms of changes to our downtown, changes to the intersection with Highway Two?
Well, I would say the downtown Kalispell is, we've been working on our land use plan. It's something that gets brought up almost every single time about what's great about Kalispell. And it's downtown and it's the heart, but the heart you also have to invest in. You regularly hear it's great, but traffic noise, whether you live here or you're visiting here, it's, it's missing something and it's the traffic. But if you were to double the traffic downtown, I don't think, literally the buildings will shake apart. You can just imagine then what's next, taking the parking away, more lanes. I always say, I, I mean, at the Highway ninety-three and U S two, if you double the traffic, that intersection's already failing, double the traffic there, what happens to all the buildings around it? You're having to acquire buildings, tear them down, add lanes. I might add that Moose's Saloon is in there. You know, it just shows you the extent, you know, I, you gotta, I know it grabs at people's hearts, but that's the reality. I mean, if you were to have to start acquiring land and adding lanes, which you would have to do, have to do to meet traffic demands, you would have a totally different landscape downtown. You would have a highway, which goes right through the middle of the historic district. It's a dedicated historic district, there's historic buildings. As you talk to property owners, they say when you're in their basements during the day, the buildings are literally shaking and about to fall apart because of just the traffic. So, I could only imagine what doubling the traffic would do. But I don't, I don't think it would result in a vibrant downtown, somewhere that's livable, somewhere that the city would want or somebody would want to invest in, other than just to get through.
Yeah, thank you for your patience. I have last question, it's just a process question. In terms of like having the vote to, for applying for the grant, we've obviously approved this plan and a number of previous plans. Is it because there's a budgetary component of having the match dollars that we're having to have a vote for applying for the grant? Is that, do we standard, typically, I, I'm trying to remember, do we typically vote on applying for grants or?
We always, we always get a resolution of support and that's what this is.
Okay.
So, essentially, this is the city council's support letter for a grant application. If the city doesn't support it, then certainly we're not going to move forward with it, so.
There is always council action on grants. And what that action is depends, I mean, on the consent agenda, you approved an amendment to a grant tonight that we'd already approved in the budget, but not the additional component amount. But if it's not within the budget, you know, we always have the acceptance come back before council. So, even on this one, you know, you would have had that at some point for the acceptance of a grant that we had applied with, usually on grants of this nature. They are brought before council early on in the process for that resolution of support to demonstrate it and to hold the public hearings as well for that component.
Great, thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Nellie?
Thank you, Your Honor. Question, you brought up the snow plowing. So, I just want to ask, because I watch this from where I work, as they go down and they plow, is there a way to make it so that that dump truck can be behind them rather than in the side lane? Because of the speed they go? Or would they do this at night, the plowing into the dump trucks? I guess either one, Mr. Boyson or Mr. Nygren?
Good question. The, the plowing is going to take place as the snow comes during the day, you know, during the night throughout the storm event. The cleanup typically, we, we don't budget to pick up the snow every time it falls. We count on, we're, we're fortunate here to have warm weather and we try to, what, what the crews call slush the snow out. They wait for it to melt, melt and let God, let it run down the drains instead of us burning diesel to put it in trucks and haul it someplace. If, whenever we do have to do the, the haul off, we'll be doing that typically at night because of the, the challenge with the traffic. And, you know, right now, with the, with the four lane configuration, we do take up parts of both of the inside lanes with that snow burn quite frequently. It, it, it will present some plowing challenges if we're trying to keep those, like a turn bay open at the intersections. Our plows do a really good job of pushing snow to the side. They don't do great pushing it ahead. That, that's not what we're set up to do, so that'll be a challenge. It, I, I think that our maintenance folks have had discussions with, with city maintenance and will be requiring some support there as well, though.
Okay. My other question kind of gets into then, and maybe this might be for you too, Mr. Boyson. South of Kalispell, at what point, if, if we go forward with a plan like this, do we say that's no longer Highway ninety-three and we actually go and make changes at, down there by, by the Bish's intersection to force the traffic? And if you want to come to Kalispell, you have to take the, take the, take an off ramp. Is that, is that something that would be within this in the future?
I, I would say that's something that potentially could be looked at, that, that's quite the undertaking. That, that is land that's owned currently by the Department of Transportation. So, there would have to be a, a transfer of ownership, a transfer of full responsibility. And it wouldn't just be through Main Street. We need to maintain connectivity. So, it would be a much larger stretch than just this portion we're talking about. It would be the entirety of the route. It would, it would be a, that, that's a much larger undertaking.
Other questions? One question, Mr. Nygren, we talked about one minute longer with the new configuration over the current configuration. Is that, are we looking at peak time in the summers? Peak time average for the year? What, I mean, I'm, I'm struggling to believe it's one minute longer in the summer.
Peak, yeah, it's average. And I would say actually it's, there's more traffic not in the summer. If you look, people don't believe that there's more traffic during the day, but the peak times, there's actually more like December, January, February. Because you have the schools in, in the summer, the schools are out. The schools create an enormous amount of traffic downtown. Traffic studies show that the P M, A M peak times are not the summer, it's the rest of the year. So, yes, it's, it's an average throughout it, but their P M, A M peak, about an extra minute of delay, which would happen mainly just because you're a single file line. It's like getting behind somebody that walks slow and you're just having to follow them through. It's not because you're stopped, it's just because you're moving slower and you're moving in a queue or what they call a platoon, so.
And then, when we talk about doubling the traffic, I mean, we're not talking about a failure of the bypass not moving traffic. We're talking more about more business activity downtown that would double the trap? What, what would cause the, or is it just over time, population growth?
It's population growth and it's the fact it'll be a, it'll be a pass through. The water flows the easiest route. I mean, even now, a lot of people continue to use Main Street, bypass the bypass, because it can be, I mean, if you're to use your Google Maps, a lot of times it still send you through Main Street because it's quicker, depending on where you're at in town. So, it, it'll be that way because yes, there's increased traffic. But as well as just because traffic's going to go where there's least resistance.
Any other questions, Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Your Honor. Did that minute delay consider the terrible parallel parker like my wife? Did it take into account, I'm serious, did it take into account the delays of someone trying to parallel park that isn't efficient in it?
I, I can't answer that question.
It didn't, it couldn't, because you don't know that. You cannot predict that, right?
No, you can't, you can't predict it today either. So, yeah. But today, I'll tell you, in that scenario, if somebody does it, the person behind him gets frustrated, makes a left and cuts somebody off and there's an accident. That's, that's the problem with the four lane. So, that, that's the scenario, you'll have a sideswipe, you'll have an accident in that scenario because the people get frustrated behind and they think there's a free lane and they don't look and they just turn and there's an accident. So, that's why in a three lane configuration, that wouldn't happen.
Other questions? Ms. Gabriel?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Nygren, I'm trying to remember how many public meetings we've had regarding this, throughout this process. Do you remember the number of those? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I don't know it either.
I mean, if you were to go back to twenty fifteen, when it started, I mean, we would be in the hundreds. I mean, developing the downtown plan, we met with over a hundred just property owners and tenants downtown, going and meeting with them one on one to develop it. And then, the public hearing process to adopt that. And then, the public hearing process for the urban renewal plan in the Tiff District. The transportation plan had numerous meetings. The, this particular plan, we held multiple open houses through not only the planning process, but as well as this concept design process. So, we would, well over a hundred.
Thank you. And then, I had one other thought. There was a gentleman that spoke, it may have been at the last public hearing. And he was a U P S driver talking about trying to park and deliver. I worked downtown for ten years and I don't remember seeing delivery trucks in front. I remember every alley being blocked with delivery trucks. Is that a common thing for people to receive freight in their front door of their business?
I can't speak to that, but I will say in three lanes, they can park in the middle for a bit of time. I've seen that quite often, it happens on first and first. So, it, I presume it actually gives an option that they may not have on Main Street at this point in time. But yes, the alley is there for that reason.
Okay. I think that's all I have right now, thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
And do we find that safe for the U P S or FedEx driver?
I'm just saying what I've seen.
I know, but to go in the middle lane and walk across, do we find that?
I, that's why I recommend, that's why I said the alley is what that's for. But I, I will say that at this point in time, because we had a comment, as Ms. Gabriel had mentioned, that they park in front on Main Street. And if that's the case, you're in a, a through lane. The center turn lane, that would not necessarily be the case if, say, you're mid-block or something. So, I do see it on First Avenue East and West where delivery vehicles will be parked in the center turn lane in order to do their delivery.
Mr. Dobbs?
Thank you, Your Honor. When do we find out if we receive the grant for the, finishing off the bypass, the, the last two intersections?
The end of June, I believe it's June we're supposed to hear. I, I can't give you an exact date, the projected timeline, although things with grants have been at a bit of a state of flux as of late. But we had heard the end of June.
And if I'm, if I understand this correctly, one of the prerequisites for us moving ahead with this plan would be for the bypass to be completed.
What's that? No, so what we had talked about during that was that we have a current grant application in place for the south, finishing the south half of the bypass. So, it's important to realize this study actually effectively didn't divert any traffic going to the bypass. So, with growth, with the study, it's showing all the traffic going down Main Street and still having an acceptable level of service. However, what, what we were talking about at the work session with the south half of the bypass is you've got a time period where this grant is only available for another two years. So, if the council were to go with it, there essentially potentially could be two construction projects going on at the same time, the south half of the bypass as well as Main Street. Because we will find out at the end of June on the south half of the bi-, south half of the bypass, which would complete it. But this grant opportunity is only in place for another two years. So, you would not be able to wait. In order to go for this grant opportunity, you cannot wait. You would have to go for it now, which means the south half of the bypass, even if you're awarded, they're not going to be, it's not going to be completed. They could potentially be completed about the same time at the, the city were lucky enough to get awarded for both, both of them. But like I say, you, if the council feels like that's a deal breaker, then you just wouldn't go for this grant opportunity because there's no, like I said, this, this money's not going to be there. If the city were to get awarded the south half and wait for it to be completed, this money won't be there.
Yeah, I understand that. I, I was just kind of trying to point out the potential of having those two projects going at the same time and the traffic nightmare that would happen during that time. It's, it's not a for sure thing that it would happen, but it's a possibility because of the short timeframe of this grant to, is that to get under construction or is that to be completed in two years?
If we were awarded, it wouldn't even start for two years, but it's the funding opportunity, the money's only there for two years. You have this grant cycle and next, so you have F Y twenty-five and F Y twenty-six. Even if the city were awarded, construction's going to go all the way into, I believe, twenty-nine or thirty. For example, West Reserve was awarded in twenty twenty-two, it's just now under construction. It's still well over a year from being completed. So, it takes a number of years, even if the grant is awarded, for it to get to the point where it's completed, it takes years. So, it's just the funding opportunity itself. The raise grant or build grant program will likely be there in years, years to come. But this particular program, it only has two years left.
I appreciate it, thanks.
Ms. Carlson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Jared, could you explain to the public, we've had comments saying we should take that, if we were awarded the grant, to take it and use it for something else? Can you just explain to the, to all of us that there are stipulations on these monies that it cannot be used for other things?
Yeah, that's correct. I, I touched on it a bit, but this is federal highway. I, I touched on it a bit, but this is federal highway dollars for safety projects. In order to even qualify for this money, you have to have adopted a Main Street's, or sorry, a safety action plan, which the council has done. Um, so this money is set aside through the, through the bill, through Congress. It, the money is allocated towards these types of projects. It's a set dollar amount and it would not be able to be utilized for anything other than safety projects with an approved safety action plan.
Thank you.
Mr. Nigron?
That brings up one thing. If in the process of tearing this up, do we have the funding to be able to?
Mike?
Oh, sorry. In the process of tearing up the street, do we have the funding to address the infrastructure below? Even though, that would come out of a separate pot, right? Is that funding there to do that all at once?
Yeah, so there's, that's what the Tiff District would be there for as well. Um, I think the infrastructure issues were a bit overstated in some of the public comments. Um, the water's there, the issue is the water main and getting access to it across the highway. Um, the shutting down Main Street and the traffic and the traffic control costs a small business owner a lot of money. Um, but the issue is fire suppression on these older historic buildings in order to meet building codes. So yes, if the city were lucky enough to get the grant, we would certainly be coming for council. It's already in the downtown plan and the urban renewal plan. Um, trying to get a cost estimate of what that would look like and, and add that to the funding so that when Main Street was tore up, trying to get fire service lines to all the buildings that would need it in order to be fully utilized to their potential.
Okay. One general question, and we're going to address it during council comment because I'm trying to reconcile something. Remember when we went through the design standards for downtown? And we were looking at, you know, road diets. And then we also had discussion, well, if we add and we increase lanes, that there's that whole concept of if you add more lanes, it induces demand. It creates more demand. Yet, I'm looking at a road diet, reducing roads, and I'm hearing that the same capacity can get through. I'm trying to reconcile, is this reduced demand? Is there inducing, how does all that work? Because I'm trying to reconcile the two concepts. Because I can remember during that, during those work sessions, the comments, well, this will make it harder for, we'd rather see people walking anyway.
I would say the modeling, they added traffic. It didn't speculate traffic going somewhere else. I think we can all assume traffic will find another route or maybe not take the, the route, one or the other. But as far as modeling it to show that it functions, because I think the, everybody's gut reaction is that it's not going to function, it can't function. So they took the, the traffic numbers as of today and grew them out to 2045 and it's still functioning. So I would say that regardless of like induced ma, demand, they shoved the traffic down it. I don't know whether it's going to go somewhere else or not. Likely some of it will and/or, like I said, not do a trip or find an alternative route.
Okay.
Another question. Thank you, Your Honor. Remind me, who did the study and who paid for that study?
We worked with, well, we worked with a number, we worked with Kittles and Associates. And then it was funded by Federal Highways through a grant, the planning grant, Safe Streets for All Planning Grant.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, public comment on this item. Step forward, give us your name and your comments.
Mayor, City Council, Debbie Kuha-McPherson, Kyla. I live in 675, um, 675 Hoffman Draw in Kyla. I love the bypass, I always liked the bypass, but I work at Central Christian Church, which is right behind the library. We have no parking there now. So you guys do this and the, we're talking years after some businesses go out, because you know they're not going to survive this, some of them. Then the parking on Sundays are even going to be less on my street. I mean, we just have enough for the people that are going to church now. But even after talking about all this stuff, if, if the buildings are rattling, why are we not fixing that first before we make it look pretty? And look at the bus. I can't stop looking at the bus and those two cars right there. Why is that safer? If this is supposed to be safer? And then you look down where the pedestrians are going, is there going to be a street light there? Because if you've got kids coming out of school, crossing over, that's going to back up traffic too. I mean, this plan does not even look like it should be there. Like, I don't understand that at all. It's not big enough. I, I'm just saying, please don't do this, don't do it. Because this is not, we're doing it opposite. Fix what needs to be fixed and then if you want to make it pretty and, you know, add that, but fix the buildings first and the plumbing and all this other stuff that needs to happen. If the battle, if, if it's rattling now, the buildings, I didn't hear that before. Why aren't we fixing that first? And then fix what, so we, you could still make it look nicer if you fix the sidewalks now. I mean, I, I was watching people yesterday coming out of church and there was kids and moms and families just walking around. There wasn't a lot open, but they didn't look scared. Because somebody was saying how scary it is to walk downtown and I don't think it's scary at all. But I think some of the sidewalks are falling apart. So anyway, I'm, I'm just, please do something else besides this. This, this is not going to work for right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, hello, my name is Bronson Willcutt. I live at 1159 Rocky Meadows Trail, which is south of, uh, Kalispell. Um, as I was listening to the presentation, I completely agree on the, you know, price on safety. Like, it's good to be safe and all. But, um, as I'm looking at the concept here, and I haven't heard the comment yet, but with that median in place, um, there is no way we can have parades, like the St. Patty's Day Parade, the Fourth of July Parade, which not only is it a highlight and fun for everyone in town and the surrounding towns, but also it's a tool that businesses utilize, that organizations utilize. Um, this past, well, this spring and this winter, I was a part of the One Brave PAC Core Committee, which was the, um, Political Action Committee to get the levy passed here in Kalispell for the high schools. And one of the major events we were at was the St. Patty's Day Parade and we had a huge float in that. And like I said, we utilized that tool to get the word out there that there was a levy and that you should vote yes on it for the future of our kids. And so, um, I think that's just another thing to consider here is with that median in place, with the, um, uh, only two lanes on each side, that, um, parades and events like that can't really happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Carrie Earl, 551 West Center Street, Kalispell. The question that I have is, does this include replacing the sidewalks on Main Street? Does it? Will it replace the sidewalks on Main Street?
Just go ahead and give your comments, ma'am. We'll get to it.
Well, okay, so I just, I would like, if it hasn't been done, I would like to see a research study done on how many people have had accidents falling on sidewalks on, on Main Street and the east side. I've fallen on Main Street and cracked my ribs. I know there are a lot of people that have had accidents. So if it includes changing the sidewalk, I would be for it. But if it doesn't, then I wouldn't be for it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Council. Uh, my name is Jayden Webble. I live in West Kalispell. Uh, I'm speaking tonight to ask that Council please vote in favor of the Resolution 6255, uh, to allow the, uh, allow city staff to apply for this grant for the Main Street Safety Action Plan. Um, I, uh, think that there is numbers and numbers and numbers of reasons why this will be a good thing, um, for Kalispell. Um, I think you see that in the pages and pages of reports that, you know, have been out with this proposal and in the work sessions that I've been able to attend. Um, I think I see those things come up again and again. In, uh, like, when we think about like, you know, why they originally wanted to do a four lane, you know, couplet around the courthouse, it's no surprise to me that the Department of Transportation would like to increase the size of the highway because the Department of Transportation is interested in people moving. And what a great way it would be to have an additionally much larger highway to move people from north to south and south to north and so on. Um, but of course, uh, US 93 and Council's Main Street is not just a highway. It is a Main Street. It is where I have had memories growing up. It's where I hope to have memories, uh, you know, later in my life. And I think a big part of that is being able to walk around and experience, um, you know, uh, the businesses and the streets and have more reasons to be there, have more, more space to enjoy that. And I think a part of that is, um, these expanded sidewalks, uh, that are part of the plan. Um, I think about the bypass, having conversations in the seventies, uh, and how long did people go back and forth about that and whether it was a good idea or not? Um, I see talks about this road diet and plans like it, um, being talked about at least since 2007 in Kalispell's and probably earlier, uh, in Kalispell's, uh, planning documents. And so I wonder, are we going to have to wait, you know, 40 years for this? Uh, and every time that we do a plan or a study about this, it seems that we keep landing on the same idea for Main Street about what Main Street needs. And so I wonder how, how many more grants will we apply for? How much more money will we spend to come and find that the answer is still this same plan over and over and over again? What's more, I think that, you know, do we need to wait for that increase in, you know, traffic? Uh, and therefore increase in accidents to occur in the meantime while we, you know, parse over this again for the next 10 years when maybe things are a little bit more amenable and then it gets passed? Um, looking at the plan, they estimate that there will be 50% more accidents on Kalispell's Main Street, not including the greater area of Kalispell, just Main Street, uh, by 2045, um, in lieu of this plan. And so it is for, um, those reasons that I would ask that Council consider, uh, applying for this grant. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Council, thank you for, um, prioritizing community and safety by bringing this safety action plan to our attention. I'm Grace Lynn Abel. Um, I live on the west side of Kalispell. Um, 258 crashes on Main Street from 2018 to 2022. Um, eight of those crashes, very serious. That is the equivalent of a motor vehicle accident every three days. Um, I personally don't find that acceptable. And so I am so grateful to see that there is action and a plan to implement safer streets, especially something as special and beautiful as Main Street in Kalispell. As a lifetime resident, I have spent a lot of time on Main Street, both working and as a patron of businesses, um, who hasn't stuck their hands in the candy bins at Norm's when they were a little too small to be doing that? Um, some of our most popular events in Kalispell on Main Street are parades, the Chocolate Affair, Christmas Stroll, Ladies' Night, all pedestrian-centric events and all packing the sidewalks full of people patronizing businesses, uh, building communities together, having chance encounters with people they haven't seen for months. And we've been spending a lot of time talking about the impacts of this plan on vehicles, but I would like to draw attention to the impact it will have on the pedestrian experience, on the human scale that is, um, how communities are built. So with that said, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, um, thank you, Nicole Schubert. Uh, kind of in contrast to what somebody just said, I was actually looking again at the photo, the other photo this time, um, with, at the school and, um, I don't know, like, I have walked up and down there from, I get my car fixed down at the corner shop and then I walk up to the, to the coffee shop, that whole distance, and I've never actually seen anybody there. And I'm pretty sure that this, that's one school and that they drop off inside, they have a parking lot where there is a drop off. I don't think anybody drops their children off here or probably wouldn't because it's much simpler to do it in the drop off that they have set up. So I'm just actually curious again, who would be, why that has to be maybe at this part of town? And like, what is the story of the person who's actually going to be using this down here? May, I can, and the other thing I was going to say is because I've been paying attention, now I've seen people walking three in a, three across on the other part, um, up on the upper Main Street. So the way the sidewalk is now, there is room for at least three people to walk across. And, um, it just seems like there's, I know you want to bring business there, but I'm not sure that, it feels like it's the businesses that need to have something that's attracting people and easy parking. So, um, the other question I had was, um, what type of accidents are those? Are they like fender benders? Because I could see that this would be increasing the risk with that parallel parking, because I've done it when I've gone to buy a spruing and I pull in and I'm in the second lane and then I see a spot. And then there's somebody right, riding me right behind, which will be more. And so then I'll often, unless I can just whip in because there's enough space, I'll go around the block. So if that, I mean, other people might not, they might just stop. And then if there's somebody right on their butt, then they're going to have to, I don't know where they're going to go if there's snow. But anyway, um, it does seem difficult. And just to reiterate what somebody said last time, which I actually thought was a joke, but I guess it was unironic. She said, not everyone can exit their car through the passenger side because there's not enough room to open your door here safely. And so I actually went up to her and said, uh, oh, that was the funniest thing I heard in the whole, uh, presentation. And she didn't get it and another woman started defending it. Like, they thought if this is the situation, I might have to climb through. She said, actually, there's that center divider and I couldn't climb through and I was kind of making a joke and she didn't get it. They, at least some people actually will be then maybe trying to climb through to park. So I thought that was worth noting again. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Fran Tabor, 1245 Third Street West. I really appreciate this being done after hours when more people can attend. And I found listening to the presentation quite interesting. When they're talking about predicting safety factors, prediction is a funny thing. It is way easier in the physical sciences than it is predicting what people will do. This last weekend, I studied it. We are supposed to have the biggest aurora on Sunday night. I slept through a magnificent Saturday night aurora. And Sunday night, when we, people over to watch from our backyard, nothing happened. That was a simple prediction. What people are going to do is difficult. You're talking about improved safety. Main Street goes past the intersection of Main Street and Idaho, otherwise known as Highway 93 and 2. Most of the accidents on Main Street take place in the intersection of Main Street and Center Street, which has turn lanes, and Main Street and Idaho, which has turn lanes. When most of the serious intersections, not just the fender benders, but the serious ones take place at those two intersections with their turn lanes, I fail to see the logic that says having turn lanes is going to reduce accidents on the main part. And then when the question was asked, well, how is it going to slow down? traffic when somebody is trying to leave their parking spot? We don't know. Please, don't tell me you're that stupid. We do know what will happen. There is a two-hour parking limit on Main Street. There is no reason to believe it is suddenly gonna turn into eight hours. There are going to be people coming and going out of those parking spots continuously, and it will stop traffic probably for every single block. And yes, sometimes people don't look to see if they should, see if somebody is already coming up behind them. Sometimes someone's coming up faster than they should. So yes, those low-speed accidents will happen, but it is absolutely gonna make driving downtown miserable. And that means you're gonna avoid going downtown. And that means you are going to have fewer accidents, because there are gonna be fewer people bothering to go down there for any reason. And that includes shopping at those stores that you're worried about making better traffic, uh, environment for. And then for the snow, again, our wonderful presenter told us, most of the heavy-duty traffic is in the wintertime during school year. And most of the snow falls during this new, same school year during the wintertime. And no, we're not too sure what's gonna happen to the snow. And yes, right now, it does take up a good deal of those center two lanes, but now it's gonna take up the middle part of the only two lanes, because a turn lane is not gonna be adequate. So we're gonna have the worst possible situation going on when we have the most amount of traffic going on. This just seems like a potential disaster. And yes, something like this can be more scenic, can work better if you go further south. But I have never yet heard of any place that did better financially, because it was more difficult for traffic to get through and more difficult for businesses to stay open while improvements are happening. So the question is, can we do anything cheaper? Can we do turn lane, turn signals on more of our streets so that we can have easier left-hand turns instead of just saying no left-hand turn? Turn signal lights are expensive, but they're a lot cheaper than turning up the street. And for ways of improving the infrastructure under the street, there are businesses that advertise, don't drag up your driveway, we can put things under the driveway. I would be willing to bet those same companies, if asked, can come up with current, uh, ideas that would work with our current infrastructure for improving what we have. I don't think they stop thinking just because they'd be working for the city instead of a private person. Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzanne Wiginton, five oh two Third Avenue East. Um, I have some prepared remarks. My first one, address the parking garage that keeps coming up. Um, I had the pleasure to serve on the selection committee for the third and main site, along with Ms. Lisa Davison. And the parking garage was brought up by that developer as something that was imperative for him to have for the hotel. He needed it for the guests, he needed it for the employees. My understanding is it's still tied to the hotel development, that the city will not get a parking garage unless we also get the hotel. Obviously, the hotel is a ways out. If at all, we don't really know. It's in the future. I don't have a crystal ball for that one. But to say that the city already has approved a parking garage, I don't think is exactly genuine. Um, now for my remarks. I understand the desire, the urge, and the obligation you must all feel, to move forward with a plan that has been on this board, on this table for so long. There have been many references to this plan being in place since two thousand and seventeen. That's eight years ago. What has happened in just the past five years? Our town and all of Montana was discovered, for better or for worse. According to the census records that just came out, Kalispell grew twenty-five percent since two thousand and twenty, more than any other town in Montana. Have we changed since two thousand and seventeen? Without a doubt, yes. I ask you to think back for a moment to your younger years, when you were enamored of a certain boyfriend, girlfriend. Maybe it was your high school love, or maybe it was from college. You dedicated not only a lot of time, but serious emotion and effort into that relationship. You thought they were the one. But time kept ticking and you grew slowly apart. You evolved, you changed. That relationship ended. Now imagine for a moment that you were being forced into an arranged marriage with that person. They were once the one, but they aren't now. Deep down, you know that. And there is fear that if you move ahead, there will not only be serious regrets, but irreversible damage. An arranged marriage isn't one you just get a divorce from and move on. I am here to ask you to not force Kalispell into an irreversible arranged marriage, with a plan that may have been right eight years ago, but isn't now. Kalispell is different now. Our needs and wants are different now. We've grown up and evolved, and we have a lot more evolving to do, as evidenced by what continues to come before your planning boards. With so much in our future, please do not marry us to the past.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, Gabe Merriman, Bias Brewing, downtown resident, downtown business owner. Um, there is a lot of concern with these pictures, and I think that, you know, the fact that a picture is worth a thousand words can be somewhat confusing to a lot of people. Um, I'd like to point to the fact that we've done the studies. We, we should rely on data. Um, however, my biggest concern is, we have a, we have an announcement on whether or not the, in, in late June, whether or not we'll get the grant to finish the two bypasses. And I think the fact that we need these bypasses is absolutely imperative. It's been pointed out in the study, thirty, thirty-seven percent of the traffic that blasts down Main Street is heavy through traffic. It's not intended to be on Main Street. Another concern I have is the fact that Main Street is controlled by the Montana Department of Transportation, thus making it harder for local business owners to do anything to their buildings, particularly with water mains being on the incorrect side of the road for those buildings. I will also point to the fact that the Kalispell Downtown Association, the Kalispell Business Improvement District, and the Kalispell Chamber of Commerce have all given letters of support for this project. Um, but again, personally, as a downtown business owner and resident, I would like to see the bypass finished. My biggest concern is if we don't apply for this grant, we are giving up a twenty-five million dollar opportunity to finish the bypass, which I, I see is the biggest hurdle towards removing heavy through traffic off of Main Street. Whether or not Maine is considered, configured exactly as such, is not as big of a concern to me as it is to some people in this room. But for heaven's sake, please, apply for this grant. And if you don't, you better pray that you got the other grant, because that bypass getting finished is imperative for all of us. And I think everybody here would agree that we would like to see thirty-seven percent of the through traffic, many of which is heavy machinery and semi-trucks. And I'm one of those downtown businesses that does suffer from some of the fault activity from the through traffic. Um, there's been a tremendous amount of money spent in the basement, um, from our previous business, uh, previous owner, Maggie and Cole, and myself to try to shore up the walls in the building. Um, the faucets will turn on from the vibration of the heavy through traffic. So whether it looks like this or not, I'm not even gonna weigh in on that. But I really hope that we can get the money to finish the bypass. And that's really all I care about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, and Counsel, uh, forgive me if I stutter a little bit, because I'm pretty nervous. I've never done this before. But I wanted to say something. Um, you know, uh, the picture that I was shown, uh, St. Matt's, I mean, they do need to have some, uh, safer crosswalks there, maybe some of them crosswalk lights and stuff there for the kids to get across the road. And for just people who want to go across from Chow to the other side of the street, right? Um, I get all that. Um, however, uh, being as we pretty much took out the one-ways on, uh, on the avenues, uh, on the east side, um, and I live on the east side, I live on Eleventh and Seventh on the east side. And really, um, going, using the, the, uh, um, going out to the bypass, uh, takes me quite a long time if I'm gonna try to get up to the, uh, the north side, uh, up to where Lowe's and Home Depot are. It takes, you know, quite a while to go that way. It's a lot shorter if I just go right through the downtown area. Um, but now that we've had all the one-ways closed off, um, it becomes more of a, um, a crapshoot, for better, a better choice of words, getting through there without running over somebody's dog or their cat, um, with the two-way traffic on those roads, uh, on the avenues. And, uh, I just was hoping that maybe, uh, we would get taken into consideration down there on the lower east side, uh, that, you know, you're, you're really putting our back up against the wall as far as being able to, to travel freely. And we, if we get pushed into this bottleneck situation downtown, um, I get it, you know, it's probably gonna be, it's probably gonna look great. There's probably gonna be a lot of cafes and stuff like that. But, um, we need to have some kind of an alternative for people that live on the east side, so that we can go up, can get places too, without too much frustration. Because it can be really frustrating, uh, right around the Fourth of July, you know, to get around anywhere in downtown Kalispell. And I wondered if anybody had thought about, like, uh, making a biaduct, uh, up, uh, First Avenue East, uh, going all the way from, uh, the courthouse, or even before the courthouse, all the way through. Um, I also asked the question whether or not the, the substrate of the street downtown is going to have to be entirely excavated. Um, if they're gonna have to rip all that out, or they're just gonna try to overlay it. And, um, because, you know, it seems like twenty-five million dollars. Man, you know, that's a lot of really heavy-duty construction of, um, I lift your back, uh, when they put that concrete roadway in here, in there. And by God, that was a huge project. I mean, six feet down they dug to get, to get a good foundation for that concrete road. And so now we're gonna, we're gonna tear it out, um, at a cost of twenty-five million? You know, I'd be a little skeptical about, about cost overruns on something like that. Uh, it just seems like it's gonna cost one heck of a lot more money than that. Um, and I want to know who's going to pay for that, uh, if that is in fact the case. Um, and I don't think it's unreasonable to, uh, uh, to talk about those cost overruns, because it seems like every project that we get started on, uh, ends up going on, you know, twenty, thirty, forty percent over projected costs and over any grants that we get. And so what happens is, is we all have to pay more in property taxes. Now, I'm retired, and I've put probably two or three generations of kids through school with my property taxes. And quite frankly, I don't need them to go up any higher so that we can make a cafe downtown. Um, I like the idea. Uh, I've seen it done in, in, in bigger cities, but they had other roads to work with other than just the Main Street. And they did, and they did work with those other roads. And I'm kind of hoping that they can do that here, too, so that we can, we can all navigate around town like we want to and not get bottlenecked into a thing where we're all frustrated in the summertime. And, uh, I just don't think we need the frustration. But I thank you all for your time and your consideration.
Sir, can we get your name? You did great. You did awesome.
Oh, my name is Mark Ryskowiak.
Great, thank you. Come back and visit with us again. All right. Any other comment? Want to make comment, or?
If you would like to make public comment online, please raise your hand.
We'll see more public comment online later. Just got a sinking feeling. We're gonna close public comment, we're gonna move to Counsel. Look for a motion. Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, I just need to find it here real quick. Pull it up. So I move that we adopt resolution number sixty-two fifty-five. Sorry. Resolution of approval, uh, for the submission of an application to the United States Department of Transportation for Safe Streets for All. Sorry, having problems. Safe Streets for All Implementation Grant.
Second.
Second, thank you, Ms. Gabriel. Discussion on the motion. Go ahead, Mr. Hunter, you made the motion.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I have my, uh, some, quite a few notes here, and I, I tried to jot additional notes from, from public comment. So bear with me here as I kind of improvise, uh, through this. But, you know, we've heard from the public comment that, uh, this Main Street plan won't work, right? But no evidence was provided. We are pursuing this plan because we have data showing it works, not just because it's pretty, though I think it will be pretty, but because it works. Successful implementation in other communities, including in Montana, where they have snow, uh, have improved safety and livability with minimal impact on traffic congestion. Where's the evidence suggesting that this hasn't worked in the many other communities that have implemented it? Studies show that road diets reduce crashes by twenty to forty-seven percent, not because of fewer vehicles on the road, but because the streets are safer. And why is that? Because there's fewer crash points, right? When you have the four lanes, there's more crash points of people, um, trying to change lanes. If you're trying to cross the traffic, you have more crash points with four lanes than you do with three or two. If you, we heard the comment about somebody walking, crossing the street from St. Matt's. If you're crossing the street, if you have two lanes in, in, in one direction, going either direction, that's, that's safer than if you're having a cross with four lanes, because if you're crossing, as you cross that first line of traffic of the cars, you can't necessarily see what the next lane is doing. They can't see you, right? And that's a common point of, uh, crashes for pedestrians. So it's safer for pedestrians crossing. Roundabouts, as we heard, um, reduced crashes by up to eighty-two percent. Th- this is the data, the solid data that we should be basing our decision on. I know people have strong opinions, but those are opinions. This is the data from implementation in other communities. People dislike the traffic noise and speed on our Main Street. That's the main reason why there are struggles with making our Main Street more successful and having more activity on it. This plan helps reduce both and increase, increases foot traffic. Public comment says there aren't enough people on the sidewalks to justify, justify wider sidewalks. But the wider sidewalks will encourage more people to walk, benefiting our downtown businesses, especially as more housing is built along the Parkline Trail. And businesses can set up, as I was speaking, uh, you know, I need to make sure our code is, allows for it, but businesses can set up covered heated outdoor seating on the expanded sidewalks during the winter, as seen in many other cold-weather cities. Regarding the congestion, the plan estimates the congestion will only increase sixty, ninety seconds by twenty forty-five. And that is under the assumption that no traffic is diverted to the bypass- And that is under the assumption that no traffic is diverted to the bypass or First Avenue's east and west. But some traffic almost certainly will be diverted to those roads and some drivers will simply adjust the timing or the amount of their driving habits. This is the reduced demand that you were speaking to, Mr. Mayor. So even the minimal increase in congestion projected for 2045 may not materialize. Regarding parking, studies show that we don't have a parking problem downtown, downtown, just a perception problem. People expect to park in front of their destination and that is not always possible downtown, but I know from experience and from our studies that parking is always available within a block or two. This plan will not change that. People are used to large, mostly empty parking lots at the big box stores. In our beautiful historic downtown, available parking spots are harder to notice, but they are there. Concerns about a lack of parking affecting downtown businesses is what many cities faced post-World War II when people moved out to the suburbs. Many cities responded by demolishing historic buildings for more and more parking, resulting in many cities converting a quarter to nearly half of their downtowns into parking. Many cities have now realized that this was a huge mistake that has left their downtowns as virtual ghost towns and are now converting parking lots back into commercial and residential spaces, which are far more productive uses that create livelier downtowns where people actually want to be. Let's not repeat the mistakes of the past. A single parking structure someday is not a big deal, but it will fill up and there will be calls for even more parking. If heated, we would lose more city lots to parking that could go towards more productive uses. The salvation for our downtown is not to focus on more parking, but instead to facilitate more people living downtown who can walk or bike to businesses and to create a downtown where people so enjoy strolling the lively historic main street that they are willing to put up with a little inconvenience around parking. Regarding parallel parking, public comment expressed concern about parallel parking and cars making right turns against crossing pedestrians, thus delaying traffic due to a single lane. This is a feature of the plan, not a bug. Drivers will slow down and be more cautious knowing someone may decide to parallel park or experience a delayed right turn. Accidents will be reduced with people not suddenly swerving into a second lane to pass someone parallel parking or making a delayed right turn. The slight inconvenience of these actions will discourage drivers from using our downtown as a shortcut, encouraging them to use the bypass instead. Entering and exiting parked cars, uh, along this new design would be the same as on First Avenue's east west, which are two lanes, right? Regarding speeding, some suggest lowering the speed limit or increasing enforcement to address speeding. Research shows, however, that speed limits and enforcement have very little long-term effect. The best way to address speeding is changing the road design to make it harder or more uncomfortable to speed. The wider and more forgiving a road, the faster people will drive it. Narrowing lanes and roads, including using curb bump outs, as well as creating more dynamic street scapes with parking lanes, street trees, and heavier pedestrian use, provides visual cues for drivers to slow down and is proven to be the most effective way to reduce speeds. And I'm actually opposed to keeping the lanes at 12 feet. I want to see them at 11 feet because that would help with speed and that would help accomplish our goals here. There was a comment about the parades. The parades can continue. They would just be on one of the lanes and that center lane at the south end of town would be a great place to set up by chairs and, and watch the parade. Regarding funding, this has been said many times, but the federal grant we are considering applying for is specifically for this type of project. It cannot be used for addressing homelessness, parking, pavement resurfacing, water line replacement, or law enforcement. If we don't get the grant, another community that recognizes the value of doing a project like this will use it. And this project won't raise your taxes and it won't lower them if we don't do it. And it won't reduce the national debt if we don't do it either. The one thing I am concerned about is the impact on businesses during construction. It will be very important for the city to participate in a shop downtown media campaign during the construction period to help support our businesses during the transition and, uh, encourage people to shop locally downtown in order to ensure that we minimize the impacts on our businesses during, during the construction. So with that, I will be in support of seeking the grant to fund the project. I do want to note if we are awarded the grant, this may have been mentioned previously, but the Western Montana Conservation Commission has a million dollar grant to fund stormwater mitigation and that money could be used to fund stormwater bioswales as part of the street redesign. Thank you.
Other discussion? Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Honor. Uh, I like to frame up what we're actually talking about here tonight. First, so, uh, and a lot of these discussions because we've kinda gotten all over the place with some of this. Tonight, we're discussing whether or not to pursue the federal grant to fund the majority of this project. The most important aspect of my position up here is to listen. I've spent the past two months seeking public opinion in and outside of my ward about seeking the federal grant for this. Now, the project existed before I, I was on council. I'm on my second term now. Um, and so I've been immersed in it in a long time and I just kinda thought everybody knew what was going on, but that is not the case, obviously. Um, as an elected official, my role is to execute the will of the people. And the, specifically in my ward and in Kalispell, it is better, it is obvious to me that after reaching out, that public opinion is weighted on the side against the city seeking the grant at this time. My other concern with this project is that the bypass project may overlap with this project, which would be detrimental. It'd be a traffic nightmare for a little, a little while. Therefore, I will not be supporting seeking this grant and my vote will reflect that. I do, however, want to point out that I still think that we need to address safety of students crossing Main Street, especially around St. Matthews. Um, we will continue to pursue that regardless. This plan actually is gonna stay here. It's just unfunded. Um, just for everybody's knowledge. It's, it's still there. It's just unfunded. Um, so there are some things that we could do to make, uh, it safer for kids to cross, especially on the south side of the downtown area where, uh, traffic probably isn't as crazy as it is in the, uh, toward, when you get toward, uh, Maine and Idaho. Anyway, I appreciate that, your time and, uh, back to, to the next comment.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, very well said. Um, I, I, I have to take a look at all the work that you folks have done going back. I've heard of the nineteen seventy-nine plan I reviewed, some of that, nineteen ninety-four work, two thousand fifteen work, two thousand sixteen, two thousand twelve trail meeting, um, meetings that were held. Uh, you say hundreds of meetings and I certainly appreciate that work, but I think what stands out to me is very few people really show up for this process. Very few people really come out and voice their opinions unless they want something. And I see that as this particular case and people that were really working hard to improve their downtown businesses. And I think that's part of the problem and part of why so many people haven't been, been involved. That's too bad that more people don't utilize this process because we're here every Monday and we want to hear. And, um, I, I think people are remiss in not doing that. But that being said, I have determined, and I too have notes, I have determined after listening to our citizens, I am not in favor of any type of road diet on Main Street. I'm not even in favor of a 30-day diet, not even Ozempic or something to try there. Although one business owner pointed out to me, and believe me, I've talked to several, paint the lines, paint the lines. You really want to see how this will work. Paint this for a year, a very trusted friend and downtown business owner to see what a cluster we may cause. I know that misses out on the grant. I know it misses a lot of objectives that you have worked on as staff and maybe others for a long time. And again, I appreciate that, but I think one needs to see what would happen and that's a good example. Maybe tying in with Mr. Dowd's comments of maybe later and not take the Biden bucks that are being doled out, which will probably be doged away anyhow. I don't even know why we're talking about some of this. It could go away before we even ever get the money. That being said, I've been contacted by many dozen, uh, dozens of trusted citizens who are adamly opposed to this. Um, twenty-six point nine million dollars. Yes, everybody, it's not our money. It won't raise our taxes. True. It's still money spent on things that shouldn't be. If some other community gets it and they're ready for it, so be it. I guess that's the way it goes. It's just so ironic to me that we spend twenty-seven million widening reserve, which I certainly support, but then go right back at it with 26 million to narrow Main Street. It just seems so counteractive to me. Uh, and again, not serving as long as some of you have. And again, I give kudos to you, but I just, I, I can't, can't get there. Should we digress now into back what we were? No, we spent millions getting to this four lane to get traffic through, as the gentleman said, from the east side. I too live on the east side and I take Main Street down because I don't want to go hit the bypass. I think it's gonna affect a lot of people who like to hop on their main street the way it exists today. I'm sorry about the downtown businesses that are shaken. That's too bad, but that's, that's part of business. It's part of business. You gotta improve that on your own. It truly is not taxpayers' responsibility to improve their buildings. They bought them. It's their investment. They gotta fix it. I know this isn't getting me any votes, but don't worry. I'm not running again. I feel this would break downtown. I really feel this would break downtown. A year or two of construction, all that goes along with that. I think it's just detrimental to downtown. And once people leave an area where they like to frequent now, the young lady in the back, who I trust, I like some of those events too. Once they leave an area and they go to someplace else, they decide they like quaint little Big Fork better or Whitefish, or they'd rather go up on the hill because parking's better. Oftentimes, they find new places of business they like to frequent and they don't come back. They don't come back, is the research I've looked up and read in other towns where this has happened. They, they just don't come back. I think Reserve Street, Mr. Vossen said it. He didn't even want to talk about Missoula, but they did the road diet on Reserve. I won't travel that road. I will not travel that road. I don't go to businesses on Reserve Street anymore in Missoula. I think it's a cluster. I don't want to see downtown become that. Many long town, longtime downtown business owners who I've talked to are not in favor of this, but they're afraid to come forward because they don't want to affect their business because some are. But many businesses have given up even attending the meetings because they thought it would never come to fruition. They thought this would never happen. So some big boys downtown stopped going to meetings because it's been talked about since nineteen seventy-nine. So they don't attend. They don't, they, they, they don't get involved anymore because it's been such a long discussed conversation that they've just felt it's never gonna happen. And so they have given up on it. But now here it is for them. And many are selling and/or moving. Many will be leaving just with the thought of this, perhaps in the next couple of years. I hate to see that because they're good businesses, longtime businesses. Again, some of them said they hope this is just doged away. I repeat that again. If this is an effort by some to dismantle Kalispell crews by slowing down traffic, something that people actually in this town enjoy, not, they're not bad people. They're not all revving their engines and racing. The average person is out there showing off their car. They've put their blood, sweat, and tears into all their money to show it off for a little bit instead of it sitting in the garage. They want to bring it out. They drive down Main Street. They go to the businesses. The one business owner, we love it. It creates business. It's good for them. But if this is an effort to slow that down because you have the idiot kid that decides to go 50 miles an hour, 60 miles an hour down Main or burn coal for an extended amount of time, now they're just gonna move to First East, First West. Do you think we have problems with those neighbors now? Let's do this. Let's see what happens to First East and First West, probably Second and Third. I think a total nightmare for those folks. I think you're gonna see a total change in residents in those areas if this happens, even during the two-year period. I kinda drove the east side today looking. There's already a lot of homes for sale that, and that's just the market. I mean, things happen, but I, I think you're gonna see a total change in our First and East West. And I think we're gonna lose some damn fine businesses that will move away from this. They just can't sustain it. And I know some of my fellow council members didn't care for some comments by former council people who said what they went through years ago and had to take their first mortgage and were slipping behind during the construction. Um, they had a little more money than some of these folks, I think. And I, I hate to see them go in debt or sit there idle. I agree. If this does happen and the rest of you support this, something's gotta be done for these people. But is that the taxpayers' responsibility to fund projects, to support that? I would want to do that too, but it, it's just gonna be bad no matter how you look at it for these fine folks that have been downtown for years. And then some have said to me, and I think this came from a downtown business owner, this would be well and fine if there could be more businesses that could serve wine or beer and more liquor licenses that were readily, readily available for less than 1.5 or $2 million because people want a glass of wine or a beer with their meal. And, and every business would have to have that to make it this walkable place. And it's sad. It sounds like I'm promoting alcoholism or something, but people want to be able to go in and have that. And many of these businesses aren't set up for that. They can't do that. They, they, they don't serve food, but even the ones that can, can hardly afford the license if they want to come in brand new and, and get that type of a license. One business owner told me, the way it even stands now and parking would get worse from this. He says, if people have to walk a block to get to my bu, business, they expect me to have to rub their feet before they do business with me because they're so mad they had to park away. It's only gonna get worse. Gonna rub their feet before they'll do business because they're so upset they had to walk a little ways.
They already do.
People don't want to walk anymore. They don't want to walk anymore.
Nothing, nothing changes that about this plan.
I believe this is my turn.
Okay.
Did I interrupt you?
All right. Fair enough.
I wish this was more a parking garage. I know it's not. I understand that. It's too bad. It's too bad that there's requirement, our money, they're doling back out, can't come to our first need that everybody has identified as the biggest need, that they have to put some shoestring on it and tell us how we should spend in our community. But I get all the rules and all that stuff, whatever. I do think winter plowing is still an issue. It's always gonna be an issue, but this makes it even worse. Uh, I think DOT someday would say, you guys are gonna have to deal with this. What a nightmare with their big equipment and their wings and they come down Main Street the way it is now and are quite efficient. This changes the dynamics of that for their equipment that they have. And I think it's gonna change a lot of business models and how DOT has to do their job and, but they're the pros on that. This skinny lane opening doors into this traffic is much different than First Avenue East and First Avenue West typically, um, not as busy. This is just so narrow and so problematic. And I agree, the lady that brought up the, lady who said crawl over the council, my mom, my brother-in-law, they certainly can't crawl over the council to get out of their car to go do business and spend some money with these folks downtown. Not gonna happen. They're gonna avoid it. Cause they're not gonna want to open their door, get their door tore off or end up with an injury for them. We talk about these injuries. There's no, again, no study can show what's gonna happen with this with doors opening and somebody driving by and taking out their door or leg or the person. Mr. Hunter, you said, no evidence. This can't work. I, I go back to reserve as the evidence and other communities will say this has completely destroyed their town if you really look into it. There are towns that have tried this that has destroyed their town. And even though I sound like I... And even though I sound like I I do want businesses to take care of themselves down there, I don't want to see them go out of business at all. And I will not be supporting this road diet or any part of it.
Thank you, Your Honor. I also went downtown Main Street, did some walk into businesses. And I was surprised how many, and I didn't tell them who I was or try to lead anything. What do you think about downtown? And he said, well, we know that there's some pressure from some of the businesses on Main Street for us to say that it's a good thing, but many of them, when it was just us, said completely opposite. Had a lot of discussions with many folks down there.
I I totally understand what you're saying, Jed. It 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 does concern me. Twenty-five years in law enforcement, when you stand out in the middle of a road with a badge and a gun and people still don't listen to you? You think this is going to change anything? It's not. It's going to make it worse. Few days ago, I was going down Main Street to go to the courthouse and I was in that number one lane. And there's Tesla parked in front of Bias Brewing, in fact. Three quarters of the way into the traffic lane. So I came to a stop. Well, what in the world's going on there? I looked to the lane to the left of me because yes, there's a lane to the left. It's not necessarily a turn lane, but looked to that lane to the left and it's just a steady flow of traffic. This was at a time that was normal time. Finally, when I made that chance, had the chance to get into that second lane and go around, it was somebody who had pulled their vehicle just right into the, behind another vehicle as the lady was trying to get her baby out of her car seat, out of the backseat. That impacted me hard thinking about that situation and how does this? As I looked through all these pictures today, I kept looking at that. Where along there could I, could that happen? Okay. All right, yeah. Certainly could go into that of the lane. We talk about traffic accidents. Well, let's now talk head on because on some of these, you're going to be talking head on if you did that. You're right, Jed. I spent how many millions of dollars? We went to DC for twenty-five million dollars to get to make a road from two lane because of accidents and how dangerous it was and we had to go to four lane. And now we're talking spending over twenty-five million to go from four lane to two lane. All that said, is, could this happen? I listened to a pretty good man here Friday give a talk. And he said, you know, a lot of this is perspective. And it is. Is it wrong? Your thoughts? No. Is it wrong? Your thoughts? No. It's perspective of what it is. And we have a different perspective sitting up here a lot of times amongst each other. Doesn't mean we're we're bad people or anything like that. I love to hear that there's some folks that love using that downtown for those events. I do too. I like to go down there. Very successful the way it is. Could there stand to be more room on the sidewalks? Sure. Would it happen after going through construction season to do that? Probably kill those events. So I have concern on those type of things. So as I think about it, I also am concerned about if our buildings are that bad down Main Street, should we be doing any construction at all? Should insurance companies be interning those buildings if it's that bad? Truly. But for a lot of those reasons, I, today isn't that timing. If this, if Main Street was no longer Highway ninety-three and it was a off turn off of the highway and the highway bypassed Kalispel completely and went up and took that load off of Main Street so that you had to make the decision to come down Main Street? Okay, that might be it. You know what? We're not there. So could I see where this plan would work? I I certainly can. Is it today? For me, I have to be a no. I have to be a hard no for today. And that doesn't mean that I doubt city staff's time that you've done on this. You guys have done an amazing yeoman's work to get this to this point. And I appreciate that. And that's my no vote is not saying anything against you guys. I support you guys wholly. But today I just can't support it.
Other discussion? Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, so this is really hard for a lot of us up here because many of us have been on this council when all this, well, for me, twenty thirteen. We we watched this in particular kind of unfold through a lot of different process as it pertained to the core area, the trail, and then eventually the downtown plan. And I'd say for me personally, it's it's hard to have the feelings that I'm having right now because I I had, I had a lot of promise in in my heart for this. If I'm being honest about my feelings, where I think I'm at on this and where we're at as a city, twenty seventeen was a hundred years ago for Kalispel. We were a much different town in twenty seventeen. I hate it when people blame stuff on COVID. I'm not blaming it on COVID. But I am saying, we did hear it's the valley, the city that Valley's grown twenty-five percent, if not more. I, to me, that that changes my rationale and my thinking about this. And I I want to be extremely careful about pulling the trigger on something like this because when you do start tearing stuff up, you don't fix it. You don't put it back the way it is. And I I have a feeling that what we have right now, when you go and you think about this versus, you know, what could happen in the next twenty years, could happen in the next twenty years. Maybe we're out of balance right now with what we have here. In the next twenty-eight years, who knows what's going to happen? Well, certainly the bypass will be completely done. Hopefully that's, you know, here in the next couple of years, but certainly by then. And I just, I think that traffic flows could go through and change with that being completed. You know, here, in the next couple of years, probably. I know that I've been, I guess, read that, you know, there's plans in the making for, you know, the mall, the way that's going to operate and everything. So that kind of opens up, you know, a lot of opportunity for for Main Street and downtown Kalispel as well also. I'm also weighing a lot of my decision on this and what I've heard in public comment and emails. Uh, this is public infrastructure. It's your infrastructure. And, um, you know, I've heard more on the negative side about what people think about this. But I do want to be clear that I also think that, you know, sometimes you hear when you're on the council, decisions or decisions that weren't made by councils twenty years back or thirty years back, why didn't they make that decision? This is why. You know, I'm hearing public comment. I'm reacting to public comment and I'm basing some of my decision based off of what I've heard on public comment. So if the choice is to go through and walk away from what could be an opportunity for getting the funds to do this, I'm also, I'm basing my decision partially on that from what I'm hearing, that that the public does not want us to go for that. You know, also when I first started thinking about this about twenty sixteen, maybe then, there was also another component in my mind that I was kind of working on as it came to infrastructure, and that was also the east side bypass that really kind of got me thinking like, you know, this could work. I'm not sure when that kind of dropped off. I remember kind of hearing and then it just kind of went away. So the east side bypass, I don't think is really even in a component that I've heard about for years. And certainly the west side bypass needs to be completed. So I think in my mind, we're either ahead of our time on this because the infrastructure's not in place or we're past time for this because of the growth we've experienced. And it'd be so much harder to go through and get this in now than it would have been in twenty seventeen. So I can't support this right now. It tears me up to say that. I I would love to see Kalispel like this, but I also don't want to open that can and have it be a very, very bad problem for Kalispel, trying to put that toothpaste back in the tube. So I'm being cautious on this and I'm going to be voting no.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I totally, not totally, but I disagree with a number of statements. And Mr. Hunter, I completely agree with you. I am for this plan. And yes, I did file to run, so I may not get votes. But, you know, I look at the changes that have taken place. And again, not to mention COVID. But this is an opportunity we have to do something really special for Kalispel and to embrace the changes that we're seeing. And yes, there are negative sides to it and I know there are those who are totally against it. But where's the rest of the city? You know, if there's twenty-five thousand people, where are the others and how do they feel? And I I really think to not apply for the grant, we would be missing a great opportunity. And I I think it's a great idea. And Mr. Nigren, you and your staff should be commended for all the work you have done and the time you've put into this. And I think it would create something really special for downtown Kalispel. So I I guess that's all I have to say.
Other discussion? I saw you writing notes, so.
Taking notes. Thank you, Your Honor. I'm apparently going to be in the the minority here supporting this, which I'm hearing our downtown businesses begging us for help with downtown traffic, with preservation of their buildings, getting more people downtown. I heard a comment the last time that we didn't have any restaurants downtown and they've all left, yet between the courthouse and Idaho, I counted thirty. And I'm not talking about just bars. I'm talking about people serving food. We have a thriving downtown and they're asking for help. I look at this as a great way to help them. This does not increase the parking downtown, but it certainly doesn't take parking away either. It's going to stay the same until we have a parking garage. Yes, we need more parking for people that aren't willing to walk a few blocks. We received a grant in twenty twenty-two to study this issue. We're not traffic engineers. I don't pretend to be. I count on Mr. Nigren and his staff and the consultants they hire, Mr. Boyson and and the Department of Transportation to tell us how we're going to improve traffic. We can all take every pot shot we want at this plan and say it's not going to work, but we're not traffic engineers. They've obviously studied it and come up with a plan that they say will work. I have to trust that they know what they're talking about. This is an area where I don't have any expertise and I count heavily on on them and the studies that have been done and all of the public meetings, which have been over a hundred since we started this process. So I'm struggling with the majority of us not supporting this. It's not that I want to spend millions and millions of dollars, but I think we need to to preserve our downtown. I'll stop there, but wanted to point out for those who don't know that Glacier Park International Airport is scheduled to be shut down for thirty days in the heat of our tour season like next summer. So if you want to talk about a problem getting people to Kalispel, they're all going to be coming by car and need to be coming down Main Street, but it's not going to be started yet. So I don't know. I guess that's all I've got. I'm I'm hoping that everyone, and I know you all have read the plan, but I'm hoping that everyone that has testified that is against this plan actually read it and actually watched the meetings where all of the conversation took place. Thank you.
Ms. Almond, do you want to? We're all going to get a second bite at the apple then, Mr. Hunter.
I just want to respond a few things. Yeah, just, I mean, I won't touch on everything, but one, we did approve this plan last year, not just in twenty seventeen, but last year after the pandemic and stuff. We had this in front of us. We planned to approve the plan. As Ms. Gabriel touched on, there is no changing to park, no changes to parking on Main Street. So the, you know, and and correct me if I'm wrong, the parking widths of the parking lane remains the same. Is that correct?
That's correct. And there is the ability to even make them wider if that was something. But yes, they they would be the same if not wider.
And the twelve-foot lane of the travel lane, that's the same width we have on First Avenue of East and West, correct?
It's the same as on Main Street now. But yes, and the first is same as first and first as well.
Right. So as in regards to reserve, you may recall that when we approved that, I had some concerns about reserve and it centers around a lot of the issues we're just discussing here. But there is a big difference between Main Street and Reserve. Main Street has our historic downtown businesses, very walkable pedestrian space that is like the center of our community. Reserve has very little development on it. It also has the bypass that dumps right onto Reserve as our main east-west travel corridor. If we had the bypass, you know, dump onto this as the only spot that, yeah, that that might be an issue. But in terms of safety, I'm here to tell you, Reserve is probably going to be less safe, actually, with the improvements. It'll it'll move traffic a bit more, at least for a short time. But it's probably going to be less safe because of the four lanes. That that's what the data shows us about road design. So I I have concerns about Reserve. I supported it because of the amount of traffic, because the bypass is dumping in traffic onto it. But there are some issues there that touch on the stuff that we're addressing with this plan. So anyways, I, you know, a little bit frustrated when I when I hear a lot of theories and and opinions about this stuff. And and I hear comments that, oh, you know, it's been a disaster in Missoula. Really, where's the data for that? Because that's not what I've heard. And in fact, you know, nationwide, the data doesn't support it's a disaster. If you're saying you're not driving it, maybe that was part of the point. You know, just like our Main Street. If you're, if if your point was to kind of just run through the area and Missoula decided that's not really what we want the street to be, maybe the redesign is working because they changed the atmosphere of that street, the intent of that street, and you use alternative avenues. And that was the point of it. So it may be working just fine if you're not using it. So I just, I really think we need to be making decisions based on data, facts, experience, expertise, not the opinion you came up with, you know, contemplating this for twenty minutes or whatever.
Any other discussion on it? Okay, I've got some comments. The downtown plan, starting back when I got on council eleven years ago, the whole concept was The whole concept was finish the bypass, get the bypass into place. And I was fortunate enough to be there when the, the north half was completed. And since then, we have continued to work on the southern half. Unfortunately, with this grant application, none of the money can be allocated to the bypass. So if we don't get the grant app, the grant money by the end of June for the bypass, this money can't be used for that. So our wish is for this money to be used maybe for the bypass. If we don't get those grants, it's out the window. It doesn't work. Facts. I support this project. Facts. I've said I want the bypass completed before we jump in and jump on these projects. I've said that from time and time again for 11 years. I love this project. I think this is what we wanna see for downtown. Pardon the phrase, timing sucks. We have an overlap of opportunity for grants. That if we move forward and we're successful in the $25 million grant application for this, and we're not successful on the grant application for completing the overpass at Airport Road and the bypass, the question then comes, we have to work with our partner. We don't own this road. So really the question is, without the bypass completed, without the bypass really in my vision all along, is the bypass becoming Highway 93. This becoming the business loop. That's how you reduce that through traffic. You go through Wallace, Idaho, how many people go on the business loop? Only if you're going in there. So I, I'm torn on this because I really wanna see this happen, but I'm also looking back at timing of projects. And it's just like any other project. There has to be a process and a step, step-by-step process to get from point A to point Z. And unfortunately, what I'm seeing, right now with this, with the, the application, where we're at is we're going, we're basically at, at letter O. And we're shooting forward to W. Because we don't have the things in between done. So I'm really torn with the timing. And yeah, I think we've done a great job with the application, the studies. I believe they can work. My only question is, what if they don't? We've just spent $25 million. We may not have the bypass completed, and now we have a traffic mess that we have to try to figure out how to fix. So it really is a, a quandary that we're in. And I understand the support of it. I mean, we did, we have drafted this plan. We wanna move forward. And yeah, we've approved it step by step by step. Now it's in front of us for decision time. The rubber hits the road, pardon the phrase. But this, this is now the time where we have to make the decision. Do we jump forward, apply for the grant and proceed on this and not have the other foundation firmly in place for moving traffic? And that's my biggest concern. I, I think with that, I love this. I'd love to accept the grant, but I don't know that I can move forward at this point in time without the bypass being completed, without, without that outlet of traffic being, being there. Because I understand the downtown business, the vibrations through the trucks. The whole concept was to get heavy truck traffic off of Main Street onto the bypass. And for whatever reason, they're still coming up through here. The other side is I, I look at the projects that we've done on the north end with Reserve. Now, reality, Reserve needs to be four lanes all the way through to LaSalle at some point in time. What we're seeing is conversations about those things, the east side bypass. We really wanna reclaim downtown. The grant's a little early, but we're also the victim because we don't have countywide planning on transportation with anything really that we can put into place. We've worked on a countywide plan, but we don't have the jurisdictions talking exactly yet. How do we get this done among the elected officials? And that's one of those things that has to happen. But I, at this point in time, I think we've got the cart ahead of the horse on this. And I'm just deeply concerned that we create something that we deeply regret and we can't go backwards on once it's done. Just where I'm at. Can I have a roll call vote?
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Gabrielle?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
No.
Counselor Dowd?
No.
Counselor Dolman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
No.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
No.
Mayor Johnson?
No. Motion fails. Next item, Resolution 6256, intent to hold a public hearing on police and fire impact fees. This resolution considers calling for public comment on June 16, 2025 regarding council's intent to consider changes to these impact fees. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, Mayor Council, um, as the agenda item states, we're just looking at a resolution of intent to hold a public hearing, um, on the adoption of impact fees. Um, in the memo of identified, you know, we did have a workshop on it. Um, have updated the numbers based on legislation that came out in this last session related to administrative fees and, uh, consumer price index components. So I have the updated fees in terms of calculated allowable. Um, those studies are available, um, within here and, um, excuse me, on websites. Um, but this just says that, sets that meeting for June 16th for the public hearing. Then we'll take action on it, uh, estimated in July for it. But passing the resolution of intent to authorize that, uh, public hearing and to go forward with a notice publication. Happy to answer any questions. Council may have.
Any questions for staff? Any public comment on the resolution to hold a public hearing? Counsel for motion. Ms. Gabriel?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I would move Resolution Number 6256, a resolution of intent to amend the impact fees for the City of Kalispell Police. Well, hold on, I'm just asking for a public hearing.
Just public hearing.
Yep. I would, uh, recommend that council hold a public hearing regarding Resolution Number 6256, which is a resolution of intent to amend the police and fire impact fees and call for a public hearing to be held on June 16th at our regularly scheduled meeting. So that public comment be, may be considered prior to deliberating the proposed impact fees.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Gabrielle?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dolman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Third item, appointment to the Parking Advisory Board. It's my recommendation to appoint Cody Hunter to this board. Mr. Dowd?
Your Honor, I move that we approve the mayor's appointment for this board.
Second.
Secondly, Mr. Nunley. All favor the motion, signified by stating aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Mr. Russell, City Manager report.
Couple, uh, items, Your Honor. Um, next week, uh, we are looking at the Hazard of Mitigation, uh, work sessions. We'll have a county official here to present information related to that. One thing we can add, um, as part of the Morning Star and Green Acres Project, they're required to do a special improvement district. Um, we haven't done one in quite a few years. Fairly simple process. Um, they really, they're petitioning the council to adopt it. There's only two owners of it. Um, those are the actual cooperative owners of those two respective, uh, facilities. Um, so they've been in on it all along. But since it's been a while, uh, at least put it to the council if you wanna have that as a topic for the work session. If not, we just move forward with action, uh, at the next regular meeting. So kinda wanna give council that option since it's a different, uh, basically action than we've had for a while.
Action.
Here and just go to straight action at the next regular meeting. Okay, sounds good. And then June 23rd on that work session, I sent information out to the council. Um, there's gonna be a, an update in our Windows setup with some of our, uh, audiovisual equipment. Trying to look ahead in terms of what the best time is to do it. Um, really, so you're looking at a fifth Monday meeting, um, to, because we have to ship it out. They have to handle it at the manufacturer to keep the warranty in place, and we rely on that technical, uh, cooperation we get. So we definitely want the warranty in place. But they're estimating anywhere between 14, give or take, days. So trying to find a good opportunity. Do not have a topic, uh, scheduled yet for a work session. So it would fit that if we can do it and take those two, uh, dates, that fifth Monday and a work session out, then we wouldn't have any disruption in the recording and, and, um, live viewing for those, uh, specific meetings. So as of right now, our, our plan is to ship that equipment off and get it updated and not have a, uh, work session on the, uh, what is it, the 23rd as well. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay. Anything from council? Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, first off, I'd like to thank everybody that showed up today for public comment. I know it's extremely important for us to be able to do this. I'd especially wanna thank the people that were for the project because it took a little bit more guts to be up here. Uh, the online chatter about this is pretty negative and, um, I appreciate them showing up to give their, their viewpoints. I also, you know, I do see the value in the plan, but, you know, like I said, our job is execute the will of the people and, uh, we have to do our best job and figure out what, what that is. I just wanted to talk briefly about federal grants. I know, I'm not gonna soapbox it, so everybody calm down, don't worry. Um, I just wanted to let you know that in fiscal year 2024, the federal government transferred approximately $1.1 trillion to state and local governments, which included cities and towns. The amount represented approximately 16.2% of all federal spending in 2023. I think that is a travesty for the federal government to be picking winners and losers of, for, for that money. Um, I'd much rather the money stayed local. I think the state would be a better, uh, place to sit, to sit that at. But if the grant is out there and we have something that it fits, I'm sure as heck gonna go after it because somebody's gonna get it. I will work to try to stop them from doing that, but we're still gonna go after grants that make sense for Kalispell. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Are there discuss, Mr. Hunter?
I, yeah, I think you are. Uh, Mr. Russell, you sent out an email about the History Museum. Was that something you wanted, uh?
Yeah, it was pretty late in the day. Um, so, you know, I just kind of, I had an opportunity to send it out as a request.
Mike.
Sorry. And, and so I sent it out pretty late in the day, so I didn't expect, you know, it to be addressed unless everyone's seen it. Um, just a request for, um, you know, we currently own the facility, the Central School and Museum, the Northwest Historical Museum. Uh, sent out a letter requesting that we consider, um, their ownership of it. Did receive the email about whether or not it was cost or donation. Um, during our discussions, you know, didn't ever talk about any number. And I said, you know, it's always, you may just wanna have the discussion first in terms of some of the concerns and questions council may have. Uh, obviously, anyone that's asking for something wants it, uh, for free. Uh, and that's just a, a natural thing. But, um, so I don't think there's necessarily any expectation one way or the other on that. But, um, if council wants to consider, you know, in some fashion, uh, leaving the ownership, uh, to another party, we can certainly set that up for a future meeting and invite them in to have that discussion if council so
I'm willing to have the discussion. I certainly haven't made an opinion about it yet.
So I'm seeing some nodding heads on this one. So, okay, well, I'll, I'll get, get in touch with them and, uh, we'll set up a work session, excuse me, a work session later this summer, um, when it fits for, uh, both parties and bring that topic back at that point in time.
Good, thank you. Um, and then, you know, with all this discussion about street safety, um, I've been thinking about intersection with tree line, which I imagine is probably one of our worst intersections in terms of safety. Um, and I'm just wondering, I can't remember, I know came up years ago, we had a, some explanation kind of situation there, but what, what is the status of being able to kind of improve that intersection and reduce crashes there?
That is a state intersection. I know they had opportunities and I hate to put, I will happily put a representative from the state on the spire.
I, I saw they moved the sign. So I think there's still some reconfiguration need to have, but the sign was the first step. It was in the center. They moved it. So it's underway, but yeah, Bob left. I don't know what the schedule is to get it completely realigned.
Yeah, but that is a, a State of Montana intersection.
Well, what, what are they doing then? What's the reali, I mean, are they doing a dedicated?
We'd have to, we'd have to touch base. And they had configuration plans. I know they always had right of weight concerns and issues. And again, before I speak too much, it'd probably be best to get an actual answer from them. Um, so it's accurate versus what I remember hearing and what those components are.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Bob knew you were gonna ask.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Counsel comments? All right. Uh, appreciate the comments this evening. Appreciate the time that everyone put in on this. Um, I know, once again, we had a council meeting. It's always frustrating being the fifth vote, one way or the other. Um, just want everyone to know that they're not taken lightly. And there is a lot of consideration that goes into these things. Long-term, all things being considered, if timing had been right, I definitely would have been pursuing that grant. It's a timing issue right now with me. So I urge everybody, when you see things on the agenda, when you see us talking about planning, participate from the start. Let us know from the start. Because it's really frustrating to get to the 11th hour and then get the internet keyboard warriors hammering everybody into a frenzy, telling them that City of Kalispell's gonna take away your rights or whatever. We're not. We listen to the public comment, whether it's spoken here, whether it's received by email. We also have to consider the issues at hand and for the long term. So with that, we're adjourned.